Well, good morning and welcome to our council meeting. We will jump right in and call the meeting to order. With us this morning is Reverend Jeff Gannon from Chapel Hill United Methodist Church that's going to provide an invocation. And following that, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. We invite you to join us for both of those. Reverend Gannon?
Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Oh God of us all, we give you thanks and praise for the gift, for the beauty of this day that you have made. We pray that you would help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. We give thanks for these women and men who serve you in this way. We pray your blessing upon them. Grant them the gift of wisdom. Help them to listen well, to respond in ways that reflect your gentleness, your humility. So we ask that you would bless our city, our nation, and our world. We entrust our lives to you and pray that you would help each of us and all of us to always seek the common good. For we offer this prayer in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend. We have the minutes of the December 17th meeting. Any changes or corrections? CNN, I move that we approve the December 17th, 2019 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second. Cast your vote.
Vice Mayor, would you cast your vote, please?
I'm trying to get in.
Would you like for me to cast it for you? Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the next item?
George Theo Harris, Quality of Life and Term Limits.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Legal. This is George O'Macdonald Theo Harris, 2115 South Chautauqua Ave. My number five below, the O'Macdonald reference, will make sense. I come today to speak on quality of life and public safety issues in Wichita. Richard Ruth and I met with Mayor Longwell the Monday before Christmas. And Mayor, thank you for my gift. I appreciate that. And Mr. Layton stopped in to see what we had to say. We were there to glean some sage advice from an eight-year city councilman and a four-year mayor. It was a pleasure to also have the man, Mr. Layton, with the pulse of Wichita there at the table. It was our intention to see how best we can get our ideas and thoughts for a safer and less interrupted life here in Wichita, working with city government. Here are just a sampling of the happenings in a neighborhood near you. I meet with our revolving CP officer tonight, but we have been having neighbors' cars and property stolen and damaged in the Metalark neighborhood. Two, over in Fairfax, a dog wails all day because it's lonely and left outside and neighbors' peace and tranquility are disrupted. Three, vehicles race down Clark Street in Mead Neighborhood in the crossing streets from Hillside to Grove. I asked for a stop sign several years ago. Then finally, this bad accident happened just a month before, and yet they're still citing stop signs don't stop accidents. I say obeyed stop signs do. Four, a sidewalk four inches below the driveway approach in the Grandview Neighborhood, a true safety hazard, two years and 10 months. Hello? Five, two and a half months ago, I turned in a rooster who was a crowing. This morning, she, excuse me, he, was still a crowing, illegal in the city of Wichita. If I had a farm, a welcome member, just not here in Wichita. I spoke a month ago and brought four concerns or problems, and I received one thanks from one of you. But I don't come here to speak for thanks or recognition. You seven are the most powerful people in Wichita. Whoops, I let the cat out of the bag. There was talk about getting a third term voted into the framework of how we elect a mayor and city council. At the end of the day, if the mayor and city council are doing the will of the people and answering and working their ideas to a successful end, then I wouldn't care if you had the Congress's term limits. But if one citizen such as myself comes and speaks about four or 400 safety-related items impacting our neighbors and their quality of life or public safety, and I get just one thanks from the seven most powerful people sitting in front of me, then I think your term limits should be reduced from two terms to the end of business today. I'm not looking for thanks. I'm looking for understanding and answers to the concerns I bring forward to have the city address and work them. That's all. And I want to thank the mayor for 12-plus years here on the city council, and we appreciate what you've done. And I wore this hat because I talked about a rooster, but if you look it up in the Chinese New Year, I just happen to be the year of the rooster also. So thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Richard Ruth, The Need to Support a Citizen's Right to Respite on Their Own Property and on Shared Public Lands.
I didn't know that was going to be the title. I thought it was just a short description. Richard Ruth, Grandview Heights, District 3. Well, quality of life is certainly a popular subject here. And if you want to grow our city and retain professionals and encourage citizen engagement, then it has to be a high priority. But the city is not going to have a budget big enough to solve all of these problems. Some of the things the city has to solve, we don't have the resources to put in a new sidewalk, and we don't have the legal ability to put a summons out or a cease and desist on a rooster. So some of the things the city does have, I think a motivation should be, how long has this problem been going on? Some of the things citizens have to solve themselves. But when a problem has persisted for months and months and months, as is the case of one of my neighbors in Grandview Heights, 14 months, a dog barking, keeping up his newborn, waking his newborn up, developmental issues will come out of that, right? Then something needs to happen, and nothing was done despite my escalating it up the chain. Nothing happened until the homeowner found the woman's son on Facebook and talked to him, and then magically, I guess, the woman was shamed into the appropriate behavior. But, you know, at its root, citizens need to respect the common good. We need to respect our neighbors' need for peace on their own property. When we come home at the end of the day, we should have the possibility of finding some respite. And there are laws that work for that, and there are laws, I think, that work against that. I believe that citizens really need to take the lead in solving some of these problems. But there are things that the city can do, and there are three things that I have for you. So one is to support the property maintenance pilot program that Susan Bays is running. This program provides an opportunity for any neighbor, anywhere in the city, to meet up with other neighbors, most of whom they haven't met before, and to work together to solve a problem. And there are some really big hearts here in Wichita. It may be one of our greatest assets, and this is a way to activate that heart in our neighborhoods. My company, the company I work for, InfoSync Services, has made this activity, one that employees will be able to use to fulfill their health and wellness activities needed to get lower insurance costs. I'll encourage other companies to do the same and add additional incentives by doing so for people to engage with their community. So please consider expanding the budget, this program, to all six districts in the next budget cycle. It is a cost saver. Number two, do not vote against neighborhood plans. SOCI has clearly stated that 74 car lots on Broadway between Kellogg and 37th Street is enough. There has to be room along Broadway for other businesses. The Planning Commission Board recently voted to permit a car lot to extend their lot into an adjacent space, despite it being in direct opposition to SOCI's neighborhood plan. Why should that board's lack of imagination shackles SOCI's fledgling attempts to revitalize itself? You seven are the final line of defense in that regard and can support ordinary citizens in their efforts, or blight will be the only thing to flourish in Wichita. Because people will just not get involved. Neighborhoods, citizens are not going to be motivated to come up here, take time out to engage with the city council or even to engage positively with neighbors if they see their efforts coming to naught. Finally, continue to seek out ways to keep citizens informed, especially our homebound. You can improve the audio feeds at DAB meetings and other board meetings, facilitate comments from those at home so they can be engaged via Facebook Live. This is pretty cheap to do. Some of the technology you've already put into place. Also, stream all of the board meetings and make them accessible to folks who can't take the day off and be there in person, but who will re-watch them if so motivated. And we still need that top-level calendar that shows all of the city events and board activities so that our citizens have an easy way of accessing that information. There are a lot of streams, there are a lot of channels, but that's a lot to manage for an average citizen. So finally, you know, compassion is not simply the ability to see the suffering around us. It's seeing our neighbor's suffering as connected to our own, and then rolling up our short sleeves and standing next to our neighbor, and often standing in place of our neighbor, in the case of our elderly and infirm, to do what needs doing to lessen our common suffering and build our common good together. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Warren Carter, Wichita Transit System.
Here's that Warren did not make it. So Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda items 1 through 17.
Any items that need to be pulled for clarification or discussion? CNN, I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 17.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Board bids and contracts dated December, January 6, 2020.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Melinda Walker, Purchasing Manager. For today, we have our engineering bids. We have KDOT Mount Vernon Road, Broadway to Southeast Boulevard, recommendation Pearson We have our KDOT 17th Street Broadway to I-35 for Pearson Construction, $9,195,793 and ad alternate of $89,000. For engineering, I mean for purchasing, we have consolidation of our lift station near 151st Street and West Kellogg. McCullough Excavation, $976,535 and ad alternate 1 and ad alternate number 2. For our new Munis, Tyler Munis system, we have our first request for proposal out, published last week, for grounds maintenance for our park and recreation. And again, with our new Tyler Munis, we are up and running for our new vendor self-service, and the website is munis@ictland.gov. And approve the bid award as recommended.
Any questions? CNN, I move we approve the bids as mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Economic Development Grant to Passageways.
Good morning, Council. Scott Rigby, City Manager's Office. We're here today to talk about passageway. At this time, we continue to work with Wichita State Center for Economic Development and Business Research to finish up the opportunity cost analysis or benefit cost analysis for passageways. So we're asking for council to defer the item to the January 21st council date at that time.
Are there any questions on what he's requesting? All right, thanks. If there's no questions, let's just simply defer this to the January 21st meeting. Motion to defer to 21st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Any other questions? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public hearing for the Multi-Sport Stadium CID.
Again, good morning, Mayor. Scott Rigby with the City Manager's Office. Today, we're here to do the public hearing for the Multi-Sport Stadium Community Investment District. Just as a background, as we started this stadium discussion back nearly two-plus years ago, back in 2017, 2018, the city identifying numerous financing tools as those outlined here, star bonds, TIF or tax increment financing, a community improvement district, which we're here today to talk about, and the use of general obligation bonds. The boundaries, which I'll show a map here shortly, encompass city-owned controlled land where the new multi-sport stadium site sits, as well as the First and Waco location, which is just north of the Drury, portions of the Waterwalk development, the city's ICE center, and then various streets and rights away within that CID district. As you see here, here's a map up on the north end of First Street, and the river is the Waco site. As you remember, that's also tied up with the development agreement with the baseball team, as they do development, that the CID generated on that site would also go to help pay for the multi-use stadium and the improvements adjacent to that. You'll see here is the baseball site down just west of McLean and Maple. The ICE center area is just south of Maple, and then as you move across the street, excluding the King of Freight Building, the Waterwalk condo, and then the real estate offices that are on Waterwalk, those will be included in the CID. What's not included is the Century 2 Performing Arts Block, because we knew at this time, at that time, when we started that discussion, there'd be future discussion about what is the future of C2, and so we kept that block off the consideration for the CID. Project, as we discussed previously, our improvements to the stadium, the river corridor, and our surrounding area. It assists with the design and construction of the multi-use stadium, the construction of utilities, improvements, and parking improvements within that district. Here's a recent conceptual rendering of the stadium. Obviously, we're moving closely to the completion of that stadium here in the next 90 days. It seems amazing, just 90 days will be done. But the CID is for 22 years, or two, up to 2%. Pay-as-you-go for a portion of that, a significant portion of that, maximum $16,550,000 would be $13 million that we associate with the CID would be for bondable CID expenses tied to the multi-use stadium. The balance would be pay-as-you-go. And at this time, the recommendation is the city council close the public hearing, pass the ordinance creating the community improvement district on emergency basis, reading it and authorize the necessary signatures. On the purpose of the emergency basis, that is to have it in effect at the time for the baseball stadium opening, which is in early April. I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Any questions? CNN, we'll go, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
We had a property owner reach out to us on 535, 549, and 551 West Douglas about being taken out of that or having that allocated to themselves. Do you know anything about that conversation, Scott?
I am aware we've been reached, we've been contacted by a business owner, and we're having discussions with that. If at some future date the city wants to consider removing that, we can. We know we have an upcoming discussion regarding the development agreement with the Riverfront Partners. We know if, for example, the council decides to move forward that DA, that they'll be coming forward and being added into the CID at that time. At that time, the most logical opportunity would then be if we wanted to remove such properties as mentioned, we could do so at that time.
So nothing, we could go forward today with that?
We could go forward.
They're not in?
No, excuse me, I think Scott's confusing this with another parcel. We have, there's a parcel that is part of Waterwalk west of the river that inadvertently was included, and we're going to bring that to you for amendment in February to remove that parcel. And that's what Scott's referencing. What you're talking about is a letter I think all of us received last night.
Yeah.
And that's a separate issue, has to do with, there are two issues. One, they had concerns that the, and actually, they're not related to the CID, they're related to the development agreement, which we'll bring to you and discuss a little bit later in the agenda, if that's all right. Because that's, it's not CID-related, it has to do with parking and with the incentives.
I don't want to hold anything up, I just want to make sure we're not.
We'll be prepared to address that.
Okay. Apologies for the confusion.
Okay. We're good?
Yep.
All right, thanks, Scott. Move out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? We encourage you to come, give your name, and five minutes at the podium.
Celestrus Sett, City of Wichita. First question, how much bonds are going to be issued on this Cid? Do you have a dollar amount?
I think they just mentioned it's pay-as-you-go, but.
So nothing's been put out, nothing's been expended, nothing's been taken out of?
So it's pay-as-you-go.
I understand, I'm just clarifying. Nothing from the general fund, nothing for this development at all has been spent at this point.
So.
The pay-as-you-go.
That's a broad question. I mean, we're building a baseball stadium, so some of those funds are going to pay off part of the baseball stadium. So we have spent money.
I'm talking about Cid bonds, though, we're on the Cid part of this agenda.
So it's pay-as-you-go, you can't spend it until you get it.
Okay. And back to this question about with a Cid, everybody has to be in agreement in a Cid. Every property owner has to be in agreement.
Right.
So there was some confusion here about this agenda item, but I'm guessing that this Cid has had no disagreements from any property owners in this proposed district. Is that correct?
Yeah, as Bob Layton said, the confusion is over the development agreement, not the Cid.
Right, I got that. So I'm just clarifying that in this proposed Cid, there's been no?
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council, manager, staff. I'm Gary Plummer, I'm the president and CEO of the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. We're located at 350 West Douglas. Excuse me, that is West Douglas. This morning, actually, I'm representing the Riverfront Master Plan Coalition, made up of community organizations, including the Wichita Community Foundation, Visit Wichita, Wichita Downtown, Greater Wichita Partnership, and W, along with public partners, Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita. I'd like to speak regarding the proposed CID, particularly as it relates to the Riverfront Legacy Master Plant. We understand the procedural necessity of bringing the CID up for approval today to be able to generate the revenues that will support the exciting activities related to the ballpark. We look forward to future developments along both sides of the river in 2020 and beyond. We're also excited to see how the revenues generated can ultimately support the Riverfront Legacy vision for a world-class performing arts center, convention center, and green space that will also be welcoming to the whole community. To that end, the coalition appreciates comments that were made by Councilman Fry regarding the CID at your December 17th city council meeting regarding the potential future utilization of funds on the East Bank as well. It's a wonderful time to see these plans come together in ways that will bring development to both sides of the Arkansas River, and we want to thank you for your efforts to make this a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, council. Thank you for this time. I want to spend very little time talking about this because, you know, this is just window dressing. We all know that this has to pass and whatnot.
Tell your name, please, Craig.
Craig Gable. Anyhow, the, you know, we've got $80 million spent on a ballpark, and it's got to be financed somehow. I understand that and stuff. What I wanted to talk about was, I guess, start with history and maybe the future. 20 years ago, I was here. I was, you know, 20, 18 years ago, I spoke right before this council about downtown development and stuff, and I was a proponent originally. I was friends with Carlos May and New Bob Knight, and the original downtown development was for the river and stuff. We were going to have carnival, we were going to bring people in from out of town, and then it got shanghaied by, you know, developers that owned property in Old Town, Sheldon Kamen, who was county commissioner at the time, and stuff. And then things kind of, you know, Waterwalk was a failure because it never ever got the support that it should have, because all the support was going in other areas and stuff. And so, here we are today, basically. Let's give, go a little further and stuff. This project today, whatnot, guys, some of you just got elected. Obviously, the public supports you on what you're doing down here, okay? Or either they just don't know what's going on. Anyhow, I would like to encourage you in the future to handle these projects differently. If these people need $6 million to do a project on these other, this other development end of this thing, the hotel and the shops and stuff like that, put it in a bill. Let's not do it crazy. You know, let's not give land away for a dollar and then buy, they go buy $60,000 of the land and you give them $3 million. It makes you look bad, and I want to be a proponent for this council. I do not want to be a negative factor and stuff like that. So in the future, it was the same way with Waterwalk, you know? We gave all the parking away to Waterwalk, and then Century 2 doesn't have enough parking anymore and stuff like that. And I said, stop doing these deals, do it straight out, you know what I mean? It'll make you look better, it'll make the public support these projects better and stuff like that. In the early 2000s and whatnot, I tried to buy a building, it was the OA Sutton Building on Douglas, and I was bidding 3.
Can you tie this to today's agenda item?
Well, yes.
It's not open podium, we're talking about the CID.
Well, the simple fact of the matter is, guys, these projects are all over-promised and under-performed. The example is Exploration Place. They do a little over 100,000 people. When you take the fact that USD 259 sends their kids down, they're $50,000 twice a year and whatnot, there's very few people go to Exploration Place other than the kids from 259. And all these are over-promised and they underperform and whatnot. What we need in this city and what we lost was the Boeing jobs. We've spent a billion dollars in downtown development, you know, between the airport and the arena and all that stuff, a billion dollars, okay? What we need is 3,000 jobs, good-paying jobs, okay? This is not going to do that, you know, right here. Last decade, Wichita Eagles says we had zero GDP in the last 10 years. We've actually had, we're probably starting in our third recession in the last 10 years. We need jobs to come to town. You know, if we'd have put up a big sign and said, hey, we had a billion dollars to bring 3,000 jobs to town, we'd have probably got it because the state would have matched us with 2 billion more. Let's put that in perspective. In New York City, they offered $2 billion to bring 25,000 jobs from the big company up there that OK Zero Cortez ran off and whatnot, 25,000 jobs for 2 billion. We've got a billion dollars and we've got zero growth invested. In the future, let's, I don't care if you guys do these things, I want to be a proponent for you and whatnot, but we need to start thinking about what it's going to take to bring jobs to town. And like I said, then we need to be a little more straight up about everything. Thank you.
Next speaker. Any other speakers? You were on the going once, going twice there.
I wanted to give everybody else a chance. I'm too concerned a little bit about.
And you are.
Doug Ballard, 920 Buffalo. I too am a little concerned about obligating us to things that, not very long ago, we haven't been too successful. We do need a lot of things. I'm worried about the aircraft industry. I have some contacts, whatever that means, that is real concerning about the 737 and how that will affect this town. And I don't know if any of you can tell me that, it won't matter to me because I won't be here, but my kids and grandkids are going to be here. Can you tell me that 20 years from now, that Beach, Cessna, Learjet, and Boeing will still be here? Spirits have of their work. Spirits, half of their work is 737 max? I have people who are experts, more experts than anybody that's here today, who say that plane may never fly again. And can you imagine the, the domino effect that's going to happen if any of those things happen? You guys, what I say on the bonds, you cosigned for a building for Cessna and for Boeing, and a week later, they start talking about layoffs. And see, when they lay off somebody from any of those companies, somebody else gets laid off someplace else. How much toilet paper do you think goes to Boeing on an annual basis? It's, it's a lot. There's a lot of towns in the state that are not as big as the number of people that work at Spirit or Boeing or whatever they're currently calling themselves. So, I, I'm real concerned that we're heading into a recession that will affect Wichita more than maybe the rest of the country. So, I'm concerned about continuing with things that may not be effective. And I also am always concerned about, in these areas, the businesses that are already there that have stood the test of time, and will they be here five or six years from now? I'm not so sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Anyone else? Making sure everyone had a chance. Seeing none, we'll bring discussion to the bench. Any, Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary and members of the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan, thank you for your comments. Yes, last month, when this was first brought, I did express concern about allocating CID revenue from the East Bank for the West Bank project, specifically at the Boathouse property. I've been assured that as we go forward with this, we can amend the district to create an allowance for revenue from that to be used for performing arts and/or convention center and/or green space on the East Bank. And as we pers, as we get further along, that would be my intent, and hopefully, I can get the rest of the council to agree as well, and we can do that going forward. I know that the East Bank is a very expensive proposition with multiple layers and multiple facilities, and we're not going to be able to do that all at once. It's going to take years. But I think we got to make sure that we're getting this project on the West Bank done successfully, open, and paid for so that we can do those projects on the East Bank. So, that's why I'm going to be supportive of this, knowing that in the future, I want to address that allowance for that space.
Yeah, and I think most of the council's in agreement with that. I don't think there's any argument that we want to separate the two and make sure that the revenue for the East Bank is there for whatever happens there. So, I know this is split in council districts four and six. Ready to move this forward, then, if there's no other questions? Well, yeah.
Go ahead and take, close the public, make the motion to close the public hearing, pass the ordinance, creating the Community Improvement District on emergency first reading, and authorize necessary signatures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public hearing for a project plan, tax increment financing for the Union Station Project Area 3 Plan.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. Mark Elder with the Office of Economic Development. The item for you today is the public hearing regarding the Phase 3 of the Union Station TIF redevelopment district. The district was established originally in 2014. Phases 1 and 2 are complete or nearly complete. It does cover approximately 10 acres of the Union Station complex, but the overall project is the redevelopment of that Union Station and related buildings, as well as additional structures as the project progresses. The redevelopment district was expanded in 2019 to add additional land that was, that is owned by the developer, and that became Phase 3 of this redevelopment project for a total of four phases that are planned to be occurring. This is the overall redevelopment district, the Union Station Redevelopment District, with the four different phases marked off there by those black lines. Phase 3 is that red box on the east side. Named the Ice House project by the developer for, in fact, it was formerly an Ice House many years ago. The project area is approximately half an acre, and it includes the rehabilitation of the Ice House building as well as, in addition to that. So, it'll create 40,000 square feet of commercial space in the area. 27,000 square feet are the existing that will be rehabbed, and then they are creating 13,000 square feet in addition to that. The TIF-eligible improvements that they'll be doing will be the new sidewalks amenities, landscaping around the buildings that would be the TIF-eligible. This is rendered of the east side of that Ice House, and you can see the mix between the old and the new construction on that project. And then here's the west side of that same building. Again, the use of tax increment financing is primarily the earthwork and site improvements around that, as well as the additional soft costs that support those improvements, for a total of TIF financing for this phase of the project, just at about $317,000. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item?
Celestrusette, just a few questions about this. Will the maturity of this TIF tag on to the maturity of the original TIF? And will they match?
So, do we intend to restart the, I don't think we can, can we?
I don't think so either. I'm just confirming that it's a 20-year addition to the TIF, correct?
So, that's my understanding, but we'll find out for sure.
Okay. Why wasn't this just a special assessment? That's another alternative to raising the money for landscaping. You could have just done a special assessment in this area. Why'd you pick a TIF?
Special assessment.
Yeah, that's where you, to pay for improvements in a certain area, you can actually just charge a special assessment to the property owners in that area.
No, that, that's a completely different tool.
Yeah, it's a different way of financing landscaping and improvements around a building. I'm just asking a simple question. Why did we just decide to broaden the TIF? Just.
Because the TIF, I believe, works better in this circumstance. Bob, you want to?
Mayor, if we get all the questions, we can address those to the council.
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you.
I'll let Mark address the first question.
This does not reset the, the original timeframe of the, the district. This project does go for 20 years, though.
Right. It's its own.
It is its own, correct.
Right.
Mayor, regarding the second question, we had multiple discussions with the developer regarding the financing for the project and what would work and what they could actually, and also what was acceptable to their lenders. And as a result of that, that's how we came to the TIF and the necessity for a TIF. And again, this is on a pay-as-you-go basis, so the city's not incurring any debt. They'll incur all of the debt on the front end, and then we'll be repaid with any increment that's, that we realized as a result of the development.
Very good. Any other speakers? Seeing no other speakers, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any other questions? We'll hand this off to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. The development of Union Station has been a great boost for our downtown, and I love going over there and seeing what's going on, and I'm looking forward to seeing what happens with the Ice House development. So, with that, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance adopting the tax increment financing project plan.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
Private development agreement with Riverfront Partners LLC.
Mayor, members of the council, Bob Layton, city manager. There we go. Thank you. I'm here to introduce the topic on the private development agreement. Joe Norton, our bond counsel, will give you the details again on the agreement. We first introduced this in December 17th and then scheduled a formal consideration for today. Just a quick reminder in terms of background, all of this work started in 2015 when the council assessed the condition of the Riverfront development, specifically what was going on in the West Bank, or probably more importantly, what was not going on the West Bank. As you remember, we're having significant problems with our baseball stadium and its condition, and we're faced with sizable expenditures in order to remodel and rehabilitate that building. We had really stagnant development on the West Bank, and there was really no continuity in terms of the development between the east and west sides. So, as a result of that, the idea came forward that we should create a public anchor, and that would be a new baseball stadium. But it was to be more than that. It was to be a multi-sport facility that would serve as an anchor for all types of public events, hoping to get close to 900,000 to a million visitors a year to participate in the activities on the West Bank. After a significant period of time and long negotiations, we were successful in obtaining AAA Pacific Coast League affiliated baseball team, and the wind surge will be starting their season, their first season here in April of 2020. I appreciated the comments made by Mr. Gable earlier regarding trying to be upfront about our projects. And at the very beginning, as we started talking about in 2017, how we were going to be able to finance all of this, we put together a package and shared it with you at the time that involved applying for star bonds, which we did receive approval for, the use of tax increment financing, the CID, which you just approved, as well as $16 million in general obligation bonds. And we have been consistent in talking about that from that period of time on to today. Of course, this was not just to create an event center, but it was also to encourage private development. And you have already approved a development agreement for land adjacent to the baseball stadium on, primarily in the northwest portion, northwest of the stadium, as well as directly east of the stadium. You have today in front of you a development agreement that would complete the missing piece for development adjacent to the stadium, and that's due north. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Norton to give you the details on the development agreement.
Good morning. Joe Norton with Gummorn Bell, the city's bond counsel. As you may recall, on December 17th, as the manager related to you, we had a summary presentation with respect to the development agreement. At that point in time, we wanted to share with you the basic structure that had been negotiated. There were some missing exhibits, and the parking easement had not yet been finalized at that point in time, but basically, all the other terms and provisions of the agreement were there and discussed. I'm pleased to report that those exhibits have been attached, and the parking easement has been negotiated and finalized, and basically, there have been no substantive changes in the concept that was discussed in the 17th. So, I thought it might be helpful just to kind of review that for the council and the public with respect to what the salient features of that development agreement are. The seven-acre site is basically known as the church property. The Metropolitan Baptist Church has functioned there for a number of years. They've entered into an agreement to sell that property to Riverfront Partners LLC, which is a development group here of local developers. This one is a little bit different in the concept, that most of the time, we have a project that's identified. We have specific estimates of projects. We have specific outlines. We have specific requests for, you know, what portion of project costs are going to be incentivized with respect to development agreement. Here, we have a conceptual project plan, and I think that plan was discussed with you briefly by Mr. Leaham on the 17th. That has not changed, to my knowledge. And basically, that development group is talking about what they can do to develop this particular site in phases. And as those phases occur, they were required to come back to this council for approval of each phase and the appropriate incentives that need to go with that. With respect to any proposed TIF financing incentives, those will probably have to go through the Downtown Review Committee and other appropriate committees to do that because we not, had not done it yet because we don't know exactly what it is that's going to happen. So, there will be some checks and balances as we go forward with respect to each individual phase, and what portion of these incentives we'll talk about later apply to that. Their conceptual budget is approximately $127 million to develop about 500,000 square feet of hotel, commercial, office, and residential development. Again, we don't know specifics, but that's the overall project concept. The document talks about developing those phases as market demand and timing of the public will satisfy payment for those things. Let me do this. Okay. The conceptual plant, site plan we talked about is depicted here in general terms with various building locations. Again, those are not set, and this also shows that the full Texas Street improvement is done, which at this point in time in the development agreement will only be extended portion of the way to service the stadium with pedestrian access over to McLean. There are triggers in the development agreement when certain development occurs that, that requires, for safety and access reasons, Texas Street to be improved all the way to McLean. That, that will happen, but not initially. The McLean improvements that we talked about previously are also under construction now and anticipated, hopefully, to be done by April 1, when the stadium opens, and those are under construction now. The one trigger that, that is here with respect to the city's right to terminate this agreement is a developer has agrees to develop 60,000 square feet of commercial development on or before 10 years from the effective date of this agreement. If that does not occur, then the city has the ability to terminate the agreement and seek else, other development. Oh, I don't think I did anything, but it moved. All right. Come on. Whoops. Can you just go to the next slide? Thank you. Okay. All right. This agreement does contain relocation restrictions, as we talked about before. For three years after the completion of each phase of the agreement, not from today's date, but from each phase as, as approved, no retail or restaurant businesses may be relocated to the development site that are currently located anywhere within a two-mile radius of the project. And the, and the map in front of you today depicts approximately what that two-mile sphere would be. In addition, the development will, will conform to all the requirements of the Ballpark Village Master Plan and the Delano Neighborhood Plan. And as we indicated before, if necessary, go through the appropriate TIF review, if that's part of this program going forward. The city would agree to issue industrial revenue bonds to provide a sales tax exemption on construction materials and personal property that's, that's purchased with the proceeds of the bonds. There will be no ad valorem property tax abatement associated with this. One of the things that we have also negotiated is the first $5 million of sales tax exemptions that will be shared with the developer rebating 2.5 million back to the city in sales tax deferred amounts, which will then be applied toward the repayment of debt service on the stadium borrowings. With respect to CID and TIF-generated revenues on this site only, not anyplace else in the TIF district with the CID district, there will be a sharing of the revenues. The first $10 million of those revenues that are generated from development on this site will go to the city, again, applied toward the debt service on cost of the stadium project and related infrastructure. The next $30 million will be applied to the developer for incentives to their program, assuming those are eligible expenditures that are approved in the individual project phases as they come to this council. The revenues generated in excess of the $40 million will then be shared 50/50 going forward, again, to pay for eligible costs, paid for by TIF and CID. Generally speaking, those eligible costs would not include vertical construction of any non-governmental building or non-parking garage facility. So, those will not be financed with this kind of revenue. The city will continue to receive its standard 5% administrative fees on all CID revenues. The parking easement has been negotiated with the developers. When they acquire the property from the church, the city will pay $400,000 for the right to have 100 parking spaces originally on the surface area located now behind. have 100 parking spaces originally on the surface area located now behind the church property, and as that's reconfigured. When, and if the developer constructs a new multi-level parking garage, which is part of the projections of this project, then those same 100 spaces would be allocated to the public in that parking garage and subject to terms of this parking easement. The easement runs during the term of the development agreement, which there are some variations depending on how long certain functions last, but approximately 22 years, which is the CID term. The church does have the right to utilize those spaces or some of those spaces during their Wednesday and Sunday regular church services and any other special functions they may have with respect to holidays. City will pay this money in exchange for this parking easement before the end of this Also, in conjunction with this project, there is a separate real estate purchase agreement that's authorized by the development agreement for the city to acquire certain property that's been acquired and assembled by an affiliate of the developer. On the screen before you, blocked in red are the parcels that have been acquired by the developer. The approximate size of that is 3.16 acres, located just west of the stadium and west of Sycamore, south of Texas Avenue. The tract on the right-hand side of the map with the north side of the parcel is anticipated to be fairly quickly utilized for surface parking in conjunction with activities at the stadium and other parking needs in the general area. This purchase will occur very quickly before the end of this month, assuming this document I'd be available to answer, you know, any additional questions that you may have at this point in time. The DA is 150 pages approximately long, and so there are lots of details in here. But we're trying to give you and the public the basic substance of what this transaction would be as we go forward.
Any questions at this point? CNN will go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item?
Celeste Rossette, 150 pages. That's a lot to go through in a short amount of time. So here's my questions. He talked, just finished, George, is that correct? Just finished talking about we were going to pay $400,000 for the parking easement and $3 million for the 18 properties. Where's this money coming from out of our funds?
We'll answer all your questions at the end.
Is that coming from the general fund? It's a simple question. I would imagine you'd know right now where it's.
So we'll answer all of them. Why don't you give me all your questions, and then we'll go from there?
I've got five minutes. I'd like to go over my questions, but I'll ask them later. Surely, I can give you a list. Parking's going to be a big problem. I was reviewing the ballpark contract, and I noticed that according to the terms of a ballpark contract, you have to provide one space for three seats of stadium parking. This is a 10,000-seat ballpark, so you're going to need to provide 3,333 parking spaces within a half-mile area. I don't see how you can do that with this map I got from city manager Layton. How are you going to meet the terms of the parking agreement?
We already have a parking plan that meets those terms.
And this is your parking plan? And there's not 3,333 seats?
There's actually more, but go ahead.
For parking within this area. So that's my first question. I don't see where we're getting all of that parking within a half-mile radius. Where will the media park? You're also, as part of the contract, supposed to provide for vans and television vans for broadcasting for media with immediate access to the facility. I didn't see that either. Has King of Freight agreed to give up their parking in Gander Mountain for us to use this new proposed parking area? Has Jack DeBoer agreed to give up his 99-year lease to allow parking in Waterwalk? Have we paid any incentives to Jack DeBoer to give up his 99-year lease rights to Gander Mountain for these parking spots? Have we given any incentives to King of Freight for giving up their agreement to rent the building and the parking garage from us because we're taking the parking garage from them? Well, how did we get just these developers for this work? That's another question. Did we bid this out to other developers? Were other developers invited to bid on this proposed development? That's a big question I have about river development. Or was it just this group that were given the bid and given SIDS and STARS and TIFs?
It's private development. They came to us.
But we're doing a public-private. We are paying them.
That's because they bought the property or buying the property.
And is there going to be profit for them for those 18 sites that we're paying $3 million for that were appraised at $1 million? How much will be their profit from having bought those properties for surface parking for the ballpark? Do we know the amount of profit they're going to make?
So we're paying fair market value.
And that came from the assessors out of Overland Park, not county assessors?
Okay.
I see that our star bonds are going to be $40 million on this project. Our TIF bonds are going to be $14 million. Our SID bonds are going to be $13 million. This was part of his display without the dollar amounts. And our government revenue bonds are going to be $16 million. How much is going to be left of our bond debt service?
We'll get that question.
Do you know that we are limited by KSA to the amount of debt we can have in the city? So I'm just asking.
We're well under our debt limit.
But we don't know how much we're under our debt limit by? That's a question.
So you want to know how much we're under our debt limit?
By the time we have financed this proposed?
Fair enough.
Okay, good. Section 3.14 states there will be relocation restrictions on businesses in a two-mile radius, which was part of the display. But what's interesting is that the city will determine if Riverfront Development Property can invite their own businesses to come within this development area and be part of this development. You're going to give approval to that list of businesses. That's an interesting side agreement. Can citizens get a list of the businesses that were approved by this private development to come within the boundaries?
If there are competing businesses out there, they can't come in in that two-mile radius.
3.14, if you've read it, on page 14 of the agreement, says that the developers will have the right to enter into any legal obligation of a lease for another business within their property. And you all can reject or accept that. Are you familiar with this? So I'm asking if citizens can look at this approved or denied list of businesses within the development area?
We'll answer that at the end.
Okay.
You've used up your five minutes. How many more questions do you have?
Have, who is going to be responsible for getting this up and making sure its presence, showing that there's a 2% sales tax increase in this said area than the ballpark? Who's going to put this up?
So that is something that we do by code. We require that to be placed on the doors of the businesses.
And who in the city will be responsible for making sure these are up?
Well, we'll make sure that we figure out who the responsible person is. We have 3,000 employees. We'll figure out who the responsible person is.
Okay. Because we're moving quickly, and it just seems like all the details about this development haven't been nailed down.
Okay, you've used up your five minutes.
I have another question regarding Jack DeBoer and Riverfront LLC. How are they going to split the SID? Have you figured that out yet?
I don't believe Jack DeBoer gets to split the SID, but we'll.
He's in this said area. That's on the, Brian was addressing that on the East Riverbank.
Yeah, but we took that out.
And he's not the property owner. The city is.
But he's got a lease on the revenues.
The CID policy states it's the property owners that collect the revenue.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Will food trucks in Waterwalk have to comply by this SID?
Celeste, you've used up about seven minutes.
That's fine, but I've tried to ask questions. It took three weeks to find out we had an Overland Park appraisal company coming in to look at the 18 properties. Three weeks were a simple answer to my question. So this is the only opportunity I have to ask you questions and get it on record that I've asked them. So who do I give my questions to? I have a list on parking. It's one sheet. And I have a list on the development that's one sheet. They're not difficult.
You can give the entire list of questions to Bob Layton.
Great, thank you.
Here's my parking, and then here's my housing. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Mayor, can I just make a comment? I just want to mention that we had an almost two-hour meeting with Ms. Celeste on Saturday about this with the city manager, council member Frye, myself, and Commissioner O'Donnell, and the Riverfront Partners. So I just want to make sure that we understand that, that we, and we stayed as long as she had questions. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
You actually didn't answer all of my questions.
All right, next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor, city council, staff. Appreciate your time. I want to thank the staff for this agenda item for updating the report. We saw it in December. There have been significant improvements since then. I want to make sure that doesn't go unacknowledged. They now show which department of the city is bringing that to us. That's important. They included the maps that we were missing in December that really allowed us to look at this and get a better idea of what's going on. I also want to thank the staff, council members, Riverfront Partners, and TP for meeting with the stakeholders last Saturday. That's important. I was able to be there in person, but I, there's a video, so I'll get a chance to look at that, and I had some written notes that were given to me. That's important for communication, so I do appreciate that. I also appreciate the economic development staff, including the clawback provisions in the development agreement. We've learned that past developers may have dishonest predictions about things, and if their word turns out to be no good, we want to take that property back and do something else with it. I think that's important. Moving on specifically to the purchase agreement, this agenda item says that we are making an agreement with Riverfront Partners, yet the purchase agreement is with Town Street Partners. That doesn't match. The staff report does not clearly delineate that these are both Laham Development doing business as other businesses. I think it should be written in the report, just to be honest. I feel it'd actually be appropriate to split this into two agenda items, one for a development agreement, one for a purchase agreement, because we're supposedly buying it from two different entities. Just something I think staff should do better for next time. The appraisal that we paid over $8,000 for contains significant inconsistencies. What has been called the Northern Assemblage, which the plans for us, as the staff mentioned earlier, are for a parking lot, yet the appraiser felt that they had to use the best and highest use of that when determining the value of the property. We're going to use it for a parking lot. It's not worth the same as what you would put a hotel on. There have been, and in this most recent report to you verbally, no plans for the Southern Assemblage have been published. What are we going to do with it? The appraiser only says that the best and highest use for this property is a multi-use development this far into the neighborhood. I don't feel that's appropriate, and I question why we're buying the Southern appendage for $1.6 million. I think we only need to buy the top half, not the bottom half. While analyzing, and this is the last one, while analyzing nearby educational options, the appraiser included Butler County Community College. It's a fine school, not exactly nearby, but I do have neighbors in Delano who've attended there. But in the meantime, as they're analyzing educational options, they admitted New Noon University, which happens to be just across the road, and they admitted Friends. This appraiser doesn't know what they're talking about. I request the city refrain from hiring them at any out-of-town appraisers in the future. Any questions? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Craig Gable. I'm going to talk today about but four. This, I said to you, this thing is a done deal, and whatnot, we all understand that. But going back to what I talked about a few minutes ago when I was up here and stuff, about the way things appeared to the public. A few years ago, most of you weren't on this council. I'm not sure Bob was even here and whatnot. I offered to buy the land where the apartments are now at the corner of McLean and Kellogg, the kind of ugly apartments there beside the ice skating rink. I offered $1.1 million. I talked to Alan Bell, and the request went nowhere because a couple of months later, we gave that ground to developers to build what was supposed to be a long-term hotel, and we got what we got and stuff anyhow. But what I was going to use that ground for was to put a carnival there, a permanent year-round or as much year-round as you possibly could, a carnival, and that would have attracted people to this area. Bob's first statement when he came up here and opened this agenda item was there's been little or no development there. If we'd had the carnival there drawing thousands and thousands of people in, possibly there would have been growth and other businesses opened up to try and service the traffic through there and whatnot. That's a but four, okay? Let's talk about another but four. All of our downtown development over the last 20 years and whatnot has focused on a lot of, on hotels, restaurants, clubs, and now apartments, okay? All right, as a restaurant owner for the last 45 years until just July, I know about the restaurant business. I've been a restaurant operator here since 1984. And I was also the food and beverage manager at the Canterbury Inn in the 80s. In those days, our, the Canterbury Inn ran 96% occupancy. That's a great number. In those days, when interest rates were high, 70% was considered break-even on a hotel. Right now, because we've built so many hotels and subsidized quite a few of them, I want not, we've got so many hotels in this town, it's my understanding, and I have family that are in the hotel business in this town, that the average occupancy rate is closer to 40 than it is to 50. But, and that means that just about every hotel in this city's, you know, just because the interest rates are so low, are barely scraping by. So I'm not sure we need to subsidize another hotel. You just might think about that. So we more or less kind of destroyed the hotel business, okay? You cannot, in this city, since Old Town has been developed and whatnot, you cannot run an independent restaurant for any length of time, be successful at it anywhere that's within three miles of Old Town. You know, Fat Ernie's is on the edge of three miles. Gables was on the edge of three miles. You guys, you'll get around town, you'll look, there's a dead zone. And that dead zone may not mean that all the restaurants are empty, but it means that they turn, and they turn, and they turn, because it's very hard. And what, if you are there, they're subsistence, you know? Mom, dad just paying the bills. They're not building wealth or putting retirements away or whatever. And now we're working on developing apartments, okay? I don't know. Drive down the streets, guys, you see a lot of vacancies in front of houses and whatnot. I said, we need to figure out a way to bring people to town, not a way to cannibalize the businesses and people's retirements around the city. And part of that might go to the fact that if you go to Garden City or Salina or someplace and you pick up a trade magazine, and you look for advertisements on, you know, come to, come to Garden City for the Three-Eyes Show, come to Dodge City for Frontier Days, you know, come here, come here, you don't see anything there for Wichita. You see a little, in the old days, you seen a little round green ball that says Wichita, not, says, it didn't incite you to pick up the thing and click and say, hey, I'm going to go here because, you know, we've got a lot going on. We've got River Fest and everything that should bring people to town. All our, the $6 million that were given to what used to be Wichita Go has all been used to siphon customers out of the city and out of the near area and whatnot to downtown, and it's cannibalizing the other businesses in town. We need to figure out some way of doing that, or, as I said before, we need to figure out a way to bring more jobs to town so there's more money for everybody to spend. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, council members. Justin Struwo, here representing Douglas LLC at 535 West Douglas. First off, I would like to thank all city staff members and city council, and also Riverfront Properties for investing in our community and trying to grow us in a positive economic development fashion. After reading the agenda and speaking with the ownerships at this location, there's just a few items that I want to touch base on. Ownership has questions on basically the financing of the TIF and the CID. It is our understanding, and it was stated by Mr. Norton, that it's going to be a private partnership development for the infrastructure that's located both at Riverfront Partners' site and then also at the city-owned properties. Our understanding of past projects is that the city's economic development policy is that any economic incentive districts be established over and above sites that are located by the applicant. In this case, it seems that off-site TIF proceeds that are from people that are not directly benefiting from are being used both for city infrastructure and Riverfront infrastructure. One thing that we've asked, based off our previous comments, is that there's significant infrastructure that needs to be improved behind our site and in front of mainly sidewalk right-of-way improvements and behind their property, which is kind of a drainage zone and some stormwater improvements. We would ask that before any TIF funds or TIF increment funds are distributed to other parties, that the increment that's used off particular parcels be used to benefit the ground in those parcels and also the adjacent land use that might even be. and also the adjacent land use that might even be city-owned. That is the only comments that we have at this time. We've had, we do have some parking easements at this location. We've communicated with Riverfront Partners. We are working with them to resolve that, and we support what they're doing for our community. But we just ask that a couple of these items be addressed prior. And so I'm standing for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, do you want us to address that issue?
Yeah.
I'll start off and then I'll ask Joe to weigh in. It was our intention.
Hold off one second.
Okay, great.
Why don't we do it at the end as we, because we may need to call the developer up too. And so let's see how many other questions we have first. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. By name for the record, Carl Peter John. Mayor, thank you for your service as you have your last meeting here. And I realize as one of seven, you're not the key decision. The magic number here is four, and I think there's four or at least more who want to proceed today. I would urge you to proceed cautiously because I think with a new mayor coming on board, I think it would be appropriate to have the new mayor involved in a momentous decision like you have today because they're going to leave just a couple of questions to throw out to you. The discussion about the sales tax, if 50% of the sales tax revenue that comes up from this new district is going to be going to the private developers. I know the city in the past has been uncomfortable with the fact that the countywide sales tax that the county collects, 73 cents goes to cities, only 27 cents stays with counties. And if you're uncomfortable with that 73-23 ratio, I think the idea that the private sector would get 50 cents out of every dollar in sales tax collected as part of the supplemental sales tax in this special district ought to be a cautionary note. Another cautionary note I would add, if you've got money, $3 million, to acquire property, that's general fund money, as I understand, normal circumstances for the city. Now, that's 3 million that can't be used for police, can't be used for fire, can't be used for streets. There's some streets I could mention in every one of your districts for you council members that if you're going to acquire property, and that's going to come off the tax rolls if it becomes used for governmental purposes and an exemption's put in place. I throw out those points because the consequences in the decision that's going to be made by this council in the last meeting of the time that Mayor Longwell, as the honor and privilege of serving as mayor, is going to have long-term consequences long beyond today's meeting. So it's not a decision to enter into lightly, and it's one that I think our next mayor ought to be involved in. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. It's great to see everybody today. Michael O'Donnell for the record, Sedgwick County Commission. Do I need to give my address or is that good? Okay, thank you. You know where to find me, Bob. So anyway, the reason why I came today is I wanted to talk about how important this project is for the district I represent. And as you all know, I try not to come and bring, push a county agenda onto the city. But when a city agenda affects the county, I do want to be involved in that. I've only spoken one other time since I left the council, and that was back in 2014 when I came to oppose the sales tax being put on the ballot. So that shows how important this is for me today to come and talk about. As many of you know, I have been fortunate enough to represent this area of Delano, three different levels here on the city council, in the state legislature, and now on the county commission. I've been through every area of this Delano district. I know residents on every block. Everybody is extremely excited about this transformation, the resurgence. You'd be hard-pressed to find another area in town that has seen so much new growth as Delano has. But many residents are flummoxed, very concerned about the parking situation, as we continue to hear about. We have a ballpark opening in 100 days. There's plenty of time and frankly, I think there's a lot of legitimacy to concerns about the ballpark. I share some of those concerns. However, we don't have time to litigate that with the ballpark coming up in 100 days. We have got to figure out parking solutions. We have done our best. I've been to more meetings than I can count, both with council members Blueba, Claycomb, the Delano Neighborhood Association, Delano United, with different business leaders. And everyone shares the same concerns. We have to move forward. We have to have this parking solution. We've had meetings with many of you at the county, talking about our involvement and what parking will look like for that area, how we can combine resources and make sure that our riverbank is as strong and thriving as possible because this is a transformational project. I am not at a position to say where the county is going to be at the end regarding participating in this parking solution. However, I do know that today's vote gets us much closer to that because this is so important, not just for the city of Wichita, but our entire region. So yes, are there legitimate concerns that anybody in the public can have that I even have? Yes. But that doesn't serve us well, and that doesn't serve the Delano. I haven't talked to one neighbor in all of Delano. And like I said, I have plenty of people that I know in that area that I consider friends, that I've known for many years and supporters, and they all share the same concern. Let's get the parking solution fixed. This gets us one step closer. I encourage any of you to reach out to me, and I can put you in contact with people I know. Council members Blueba and Claycomb can as well, but it is a serious situation we're in. I look forward to the opportunity to partner with the city as we go forward at the county level, both financially and through any other area we can coordinate. But I appreciate your time and attention to this matter. I understand how sensitive this issue has been. I stand willing to help and assist in any way possible. But I know I'm ready to move forward, and I know the people that I represent are ready to move forward with this plan. So thank you very much, and I stand for any questions.
Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you. And the county has been outstanding partners on all that we've been trying to do in the city, and we appreciate that and pass that along to your colleagues. Vice Mayor has a question, I believe.
Yeah. Michael, I just wanted to, or Commissioner O'Donnell, I just wanted to thank you for all your participation. You've been in this for a year now with us, and I appreciate everything you've been contributing. And I know you're going to continue to fight to make sure that the county's going to help us out with parking as well. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you for your diligence on that. All right. Good to see you all, and thank you very much for your service, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker. Going once, twice. All right. We'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to get something out of the way right off the bat.
Sure.
I've been friends with all four members of the Riverfront Partners Development Team for years, long before I was ever on the council. In fact, George Lehman and I have been friends since we were kids. And yes, all four contribute to my reelection campaign. None of that influenced or clouded my judgment in relation to this project. In fact, due to my knowledge of their individual character, reputation, and business successes, it gave me more comfort as a team that they can deliver on their plan. After all, it's not like these are some guys from Minnesota.
Thank you.
Not quite finished. Had to wait for effect. That was. So the pay-as-you-go incentives tied to this project also give me comfort as the city will not be issuing any debt. The parking easement at the church and the Town Street property acquisition are fair prices and help provide immediate additional parking solutions for the stadium and Delano parking challenges. So it's a blessing to have local developers who have the vision and ability to create this catalyst site, creating new jobs, additional tax revenue, significant public infrastructure, and entertainment opportunities for our citizens, and all without taking on new debt. That's a strong yes vote for me.
So, thank you. Appreciate your sharing. Councilmember Johnson, I still want to get some of these questions, and Bob wanted to address, do you want to wait or you want to go now? All right. So Bob, some of this may need to come from the developer. I know we heard from speakers that said, we don't need more parking, don't waste our money on parking. We heard from people that said, we don't have enough parking. Can you address the parking plan and how that meets what is required of the development agreement?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. We have developed a parking plan for the stadium. We worked on it through the winter, so, and we've talked to private property owners as well as assessed the public spaces that are available. In terms of what we consider to be the service area for the stadium, there are a little over 9,000 parking spaces that are available. Some of those, or many of those, are located on the east side of the river. And we have, as part of our parking plan, shown a public transit option that will allow people to, those who don't want to walk, to be able to access the stadium by using the queue line and another vent shuttle that we have developed. And we feel confident that there are plenty of spaces to support this facility. However, the concerns that were expressed by the public, we took to heart regarding having spaces closer to the stadium. And this development agreement recognizes that. We purchased property on the west side of Sycamore under this agreement. We pick up 175 spaces almost immediately in that regard. And then the parking easement provides us with another 100 spaces that are, in the short term, will be surface spaces provided on church property, and long-term will be 100 spaces located inside a parking structure to be constructed by the developer.
And then the federal government gave us $14.2 million.
That is correct, and that's the last piece of this. And that will be over 500 spaces that will be available when that facility is completed. So in really a short period of time, in the last few months, we have secured 800 additional spaces roughly, actually more than 800, in the direct neighborhood of the baseball stadium.
And then a question came up about Gander Mountain Parking. I don't believe the city sold that.
We did not. We received a fee from Gander Mountain for the use of that parking garage. We retained ownership, and when spaces are not being utilized by Gander Mountain, they're available for the public, regardless of whether it's stadium parking or event parking at Waterwalk or for some other function.
So it's still public parking.
That is correct. Still are.
All right. Go ahead, and I think it was mentioned, the parking dollars are coming from where? For the purchase of the land, with $14.2 million of the parking dollars coming from federal grant.
The primary source will be tax increment financing, and that's under the district that you just approved recently in December. That's the reason we put that in place, is to help us with the funding.
Come up with the funds from the expanded.
That is correct.
Perfect. I doubt that you have this answer, but in general, our total debt limit, even after all of this is done, is approximate. I know we have a chart somewhere that shows our debt limits about.
I'm not sure the finance staff.
50% roughly.
We have more than sufficient, and we've shared that with folks before that.
And we typically review that every budgetary season and share where our debt limit is and.
That's contained in the comprehensive annual financial report, and we must do it at least once a year, but we keep an eye on that pretty closely.
Right.
But again, we've never been close to our debt capacity.
Okay. Will there be a list of businesses that, I guess, we don't need a list of businesses that are allowed, but that are not allowed?
I think there's three questions here that were raised, more in my purview than the manager's, so I'll attempt to do that. The initial speaker is correct that the 3.14 the DA provides a mechanism whereby the developer may bring to the city a request for a particular retailer or restaurant to be allowed to be located. The city has the absolute right to reject that, refuse that request. If there's a pertinent reason that it makes sense to do so, then the city could acknowledge and accept that request. So there's no right other than to ask the question.
Perfect.
The second question raised, I think by Vincent, was, you know, why didn't we reference Town Street Development? The actual resolution that you're going to consider that would approve the DA, the real estate purchase agreement, the parking easement, all the relevant documents, does specifically talk about that purchase agreement with Town Street. And in the affirmative action section of that authorizes the DA to be executed, the real estate purchase contract, and all the other documents. So it is specific in the resolution that you're going to consider if you take action on this item. Mr. Struilo raised a question about location of TIF funds and where they're going to be used for. Again, the DA, the section we talked about on the graph of the allocation of TIF and CID for the first 10 million, the next 30, then the 50-50 split, is covered only from the TIF and CID revenues located on the developer's property for which we're linked to this development agreement. All the other TIF revenues or CID revenues generated in the district from outside that property location are available for discretion of the governing body as to how they're expended. Obviously, a primary source of that's debt service on the stadium, but there should hopefully be extra revenues. And just like the extra revenues that come from the initial 10 and the 50-50 split, again, those will be items the council determines over time as to whether they'll be spent. They're not required to be spent on the developer's property.
Right.
So I think those are the legal questions that were raised. If there's others I missed, I'd be happy to try to address those.
There was a question, I think there was a misunderstanding about sales tax. There was a comment that 50% sales tax from the district was going to be retained, and it's not, it's on the sales tax exemption. Could you just explain?
Yeah, on the industrial revenue bond, the purpose for that issuance would be to provide an abatement for sales tax paid for with IRB proceeds, which is a pretty standard exemption you give. Since the city had originally planned to apply some of that sales tax money from the construction to debt service on the stadium, the agreement was reached that from the first $5 million of exempt sales tax, the developers will rebate 2.5 million of that back to the city so it would become available for debt service or other permitted uses. Again, as the projects are incurred and as the savings are realized from the construction exemption.
Mayor, I have an answer to the question you asked before. I apologize, I didn't have it immediately. We are $833 million under our state statutory debt limit.
Okay, thank you. Staff did a fine job getting that information to you. Under our statutory debt limit. All right. Any other? Did that cover most of the questions?
I think the only other question that I wrote down was, who's going to be responsible for posting the signs regarding the 2% of CID?
The posting of the signs for CID areas, who's in charge of that?
Councilor, that issue has come up several times in the past, and our economic development staff is responsible annually to audit each of the properties that receive, that collect CID to make sure that they're.
Scott Rigby said he's eager to take on that responsibility. He's going to personally put them all up. All right. Thank you. So we'll go to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we bring up slide eight, please? All right. Yeah, that's the right one. So I know that in agreements and compromise, a good compromise always has folks who are slightly disappointed on both sides. And though this agreement addresses quite a bit, and I talked to the manager about this yesterday, I have a concern about this 10-year window of development. We were a little more restrictive on the baseball development. We required development within, I believe it was 18 months. And then there was another window of 18 months, and also that development option on another piece of land. We had all of that timed out, and although I know that this group and the great work they've done probably will not let this sit vacant, what matters to me is what's in black and white in this 10-year window is concerning to have that opportunity to be vacant. And I've struggled with this. I was a lean yes. We've talked about it. But I don't know that I can support a 10-year window on development. And again, I have, I've seen the work that this group has done in various areas, but a 10-year window really bothers me because if that were to happen, then we've approved this, and we've got this 10-year gap of no development on this site, which is next to a world-class baseball stadium and a part of what we're trying to do with the East and West Bank and making that a regional gathering space. So at this point, I'm really struggling to support this. So, at this point, I'm really struggling to support this agreement simply because of that. Everything else, I know there's give and take, and some things look good, some things don't, but this 10-year window is a struggle for me.
Councilmember Johnson, would it help if we had one of the developers come up and address that?
Yeah.
It would, but we'd still be voting on the black and white piece of allowing this 10-year gap.
So, I understand that. Why don't we ask George Leham to come up and share? My only comment, as he's coming up, I would tell you is, one, that 10-year is just simply a maximum, and two, it's a pay-as-you-go. And then, obviously, the big kicker here and the biggest difference here that's more difficult to put restrictions is it's private property. We owned the property around the baseball, and part of the agreement of transferring that was the timelines. But private property, this, so we can't dictate private property. It literally could set empty for 25 years. We have no way to dictate private property. We can encourage development, but let's let George try and address that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. George Leham, 150 North Market, Wichita, Kansas. Nobody is more motivated to develop this land than us as private developers. We're buying the land, and we are very motivated to get this developed as soon as possible. We realize that there is revenue that will be generated from our property, our development, that funds much of the ballpark, and that's a decision that was made by this council earlier this year, and we respect that decision, and we understand that your concern about the property not being developed sooner than 10 years. But our concern, believe me, is much greater than yours in the fact that we need to move through this. However, you've heard me say this before, and whether it's at the Metropolitan Baptist site or at 13th and Greenwich, what we do, and what we've done at Leham Development, and what we do at Riverfront Partners, is we will develop market-driven plans. And what that means is, when we buy a piece of property, we put a plan together. As you see here today, we have a conceptual plan. This is the general direction of where we think the market is and what people can support in this market, and so we start down the road this direction. But as we see what the needs are, who wants to be here, who doesn't want to be here, that's the direction we go. And again, you can go to the Plazio Development at 13th and Greenwich, where the Warren Theater is, the alley, the restaurants, so forth. Again, here we are, I bought that land 21 years ago. If you're wondering, I was 12. But we, you know, we still have vacant land there today. Quality takes time, especially in downtown Wichita. And if you look at, if you look at what we're trying to do, you know, if the council decides to pass this resolution today, all we're doing after three and a half years' worth of work is getting to the starting line. We're just getting to the starting line. The work just begins, and we have to go out to the market and see who wants to be not only in Wichita, but in downtown Wichita. And I know we've had many discussions about who we're going to try to attract down here, but we have our work cut out for us. This is not going to be easy, and I think, as you all know, you know, I don't pick projects that are easy, and this is not going to be easy. We have our work cut out for us. We appreciate you working with us. We appreciate Bob Layton and members of the staff who have worked many, many hours in working through this program that we're putting before you today. We appreciate councilmembers Claycomb, Frye, Blue Baugh, and the mayor for working with us through this program. Again, we have a lot of work ahead of us. It is, we have more incentive than anyone to get this project going. We have a church that has been a great partner in working with us, and we need to take care of their needs first and foremost, as promised, and so we need to work with them on their reconstruction, which we've committed to them to do. But while we're doing that, we are going to be out seeking users for this property, and we are committed to building you a beautiful city center for this community.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Claycomb? Councilmember Johnson, did you have any other questions?
No, that was it.
All right. Councilmember Claycomb?
And I don't have questions for George, but I just have a statement. So, if anybody has questions, let them go first.
I don't think so. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I also want to say, as Councilmember Frye did, that I do know these developers. This, I think, actually made this negotiation more difficult because I knew their tendencies and stuff, but it also gave me great confidence to be able to work with a group that we have seen in Wichita have produced, so I think that's really important. So, I'm pleased that we were able to create a private development agreement with the Riverfront Partners, and as part of the negotiation team, it has been a very long process that began when the partners presented an overview of their future development at the city council meeting on March 19th of last year. These discussions took months, and I believe this agreement's a benefit to the city of Wichita while being fair to the developers. We heard from the community, and especially the Delano neighborhood and businesses, that a parking plan was important, and today we have that parking plan, and it takes into account new parking spaces that are part of today's agreement with the purchase of land and a parking easement, the new federally funded multimodal center, and the identification of parking within walking or queue line distance in the parking, in the downtown area. And as City Manager Layton said, that's 9,000 parking spaces, so 9,000 parking spaces. This agreement also ensures that we get a development that fits with the Delano neighborhood plan by adhering to that plan and the Baseball Village master plan, that public amenities are part of the development, and that needed funds are contributed to the stadium debt. So, I want to thank the development team. I want to thank city staff. I want to thank my city council colleagues for their tenacity in getting to yes on this project, and I look forward to the new Riverfront Village and the vibrancy it will bring to our riverfront.
Thank you, Councilmember Claycomb, and appreciate the work that all of you did. It has not been easy, and it's been a fairly long process getting to this point, but I would guess that almost all of us up here know at least one or all of these developers. I've met some of them in the mid-'70s and got to know them when I was in the automotive business, and so I've known these folks for a long time, so yes, I can be accused of guiding dollars and voting on something for my friends again, I guess. But that's just the way things go in a town this size, and I think this is going to be outstanding for the city, for Delano, for all of the things that we're trying to do to increase the quality of life in this community, and couldn't be happier about the hard work that's gone into this and what it's gotten to come to fruition at this point. I have a lot of faith in these developers. Obviously, their willingness to do much of this is pay-as-you-go. They're going to, they're going to outland tremendous, a tremendous amount of money just to purchase this property. So, I'm going to guess they want to recoup that investment as quickly as possible. I know them well enough that their pockets aren't that deep, so they are going to have to recoup that investment, and they're in business to make money, I get it. So, if they're going in there to purchase some property that currently is not on the tax rolls, I mean, none of this is on the tax rolls. It's exempt from everything, and so this puts it on the tax rolls, and so it's really going to be not only good for what Wichita's trying to develop, but good for the long-term financing for the city of Wichita, because that will stay on the books. We keep talking about, you know, we're going to generate over $100 million to pay off all of this debt over a 20-plus-year period of time. That stays on the books forever. That's going to move into the city coffers for all kinds of opportunities. I've said this forever. I just have always operated under this principle. You can't just keep taxing people and taxing people and getting into their pockets. You have to figure out how to promote growth to increase your tax revenues, and this exactly does that. This doesn't tax people more. It increases revenues and opens it up for opportunities because of that. So, I'm very supportive of this, and Vice Mayor, I know that you've been working on this hard. This is in your district, and I'll turn it over to you unless there's any other questions.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and I'm very excited about this opportunity. When I got, come onto the council in 2013, almost seven years ago, the feedback I was getting from my district is, "We're spending so much money downtown. When do the folks out west, when do other people from the city start to feel that?" And I think this development that we're going to see west of the river is going to be some of the greatest development. We've seen it all in Wichita. When you look at the developers, the names behind this, George Leham, Dave Wells, Jerry Jones, Dave Burke, I mean, you look at what they've done in the city, they give 110%, and they make sure that we have something that all Wichita can be proud of, and I think this development's going to be something we're all going to be very proud of, and I would like to make the motion to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution which approves the development agreement and related documents, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Cast your vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
North Industrial Corridor Groundwater Contamination Site Project Monitoring Well Services Professional Services Contract.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you this morning involves a contract with Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions to design and install the monitoring well network in the North Industrial Corridor Groundwater Remediation Project. As you're familiar with, the NIC project, as we like to call it, involves a number of contamination plumes that were contributed in the area by historical industrial processes. The city is the lead on the contamination cleanup for the groundwater and, under a settlement agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and the KDHE corrective action decision includes orders for active remediation as well as ongoing monitoring of the groundwater to establish baseline contaminant levels as well as track the progress of the cleanup project. Construction of the remedial system will begin later this year, so the contract for these services is warranted and timely. The scope will include installation of 83 new monitoring wells. The project will realize savings by taking advantage of existing monitoring wells that are in the area already. Services will also include the decommissioning of 50 old wells that are either non-functional or no longer needed. Three companies proposed on this project. The staff screening and selection committee selected wood engineering based upon their experience, project approach, and best value. The project is for a cost not to exceed $123,690. Funding for this project is available in the NIC operating budget. Therefore, at this time, I'd like to provide staff's recommendations to approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? We'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? See none. We'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Pretty self-explanatory. Is there any other discussion? I move that we take the staff recommended action.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item?
Amendments to City Code Title 11, Governing Commercial Truck Routes.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item for you this morning is proposed amendment to City Code Title 11, Governing Commercial Truck Routes. City staff had received complaints of trucks, including panels sized to tractor trailers utilizing residential streets as access in an area south and west of Pawnee and Meridian. If you look at this aerial view, what's shown in yellow is all commercial and industrial use properties. Just to get you oriented, at the top of this aerial map is Pawnee. To the right of center is Meridian, which you don't see down at the bottom. South, to the south end of this area is 235, so there's a lot of truck traffic to and from 235 on Meridian. And what's happened over time is they're utilizing the streets that are shown in blue. So, it's becoming the issue is that's all entirely residential. We started hearing more and more from some of the property owners in the area concerned about safety, in particular if they have children in the area, and just general use of those streets for truck traffic. We had, we sent a letter to all of those businesses, all of the properties in yellow, trying to be proactive to see if they would curb their usage of those streets. We encouraged them to use arterial corridors only. Unfortunately, it did not have much impact, so we're here today to ask for your approval to amend the ordinance, which will make signs in the area enforceable. So, staff recommends amending the ordinance to add Crawford, Haddon, Savannah, Maxwell, St. Paul, and Richmond streets to the schedule of prohibited streets for truck traffic. This will address the safety concerns expressed by property owners and preservation of the residential streets by prohibiting truck traffic. The cost for the signing of material and staff time is available with the existing sign maintenance budget, an estimated at $970. With that, staff recommends the council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Gary. For the record, can you identify the definition of trucks in this? I mean, what are we talking about? What size of trucks? Is there a weight limit, a size limit?
So, there is, and I'm drawing a blank on technically what the ordinance says at this moment. The ordinance is included in there. This is anything, there's a class of trucks that's identified in the ordinance that's above and beyond passenger vehicles, basically.
And that will be spelled out on the signage?
It is. It's referenced on the signage to the ordinance.
Okay. On the signs that will be on display on the street?
Right. Those signs will reference the ordinance. It's a little bit of a challenge to show everything we need to on that signage. Effectively, what the no-truck does is reference the ordinance, where you can look and see it.
But not the size or weight of the vehicle?
It does not have that, like we would for posting of a bridge, no.
Okay.
I would guess that most trucking firms are familiar with the ordinance, though?
They are. They absolutely are, and we referenced that, too, when we contacted them by letter, yes. And so, what happens, again, with putting the signage up allows us to work with Wichita Police Department for enforcement. We don't have a lot of no-truck routes in the city, but I can tell you, places where we've done this in the past, it doesn't take very long for police enforcement for them to get the message.
So, we don't have that ordinance in front of us or attached, is what you're talking about. It references the ordinance number for us, but it doesn't spell it out in here.
Correct.
As part of our agenda packet. Does the ordinance also go by the number of axles, or is it just simply weight?
It's both.
Both?
It's primarily the number of axles.
Yeah.
With the type of vehicles that it references and also references a class, those classes are based on the number of axles.
Okay. And if anyone wants to know, they can go look up the ordinance number and find the information. I know Vice Mayor has a question, and then Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Gary, have you received, I mean, what kind of feedback? I hate it to just come to this, and this has been an issue for a long time with residents. They're very upset, and I hate to have to force this, but have you, what kind of discussions have you had with the trucking companies?
We did not get much feedback. We sent the letter out to all of those companies, asking them to stop using the residential streets. While those letters were being distributed, we heard from a few representatives of the companies that seemed to acknowledge that they knew what the concern was. Initially, it seemed like, in talking to the property owners in the area that had concerns, that the usage. that the usage had slowed down, but then it went back to normal. So I'm not sure what else to do at this point. I think the makeup of this neighborhood makes a lot of sense for us to consider these no-truck routes. This is the reason why the ordinance is in place in an area like this. I think is a perfect example of why we should do it, actually.
So are we landlocking anybody to where they can't get product?
We're not landlocking anybody. They're literally, and this is easy for me to say, because I don't own or run a company. We're talking about them, their trucks going an extra three or four blocks, is all this amounts to. Most of these businesses, except for the ones that directly face Custer, they would have to go up and around to Pawnee anyway, and we've witnessed that. So you've got trucks, everything except for those businesses on the east side, we still witness trucks going through the neighborhood, up Custer to Pawnee, and back around the loop, just because they wanted to avoid the intersection of Pawnee and Meridian. But you're talking about a short distance, and I don't think this is too much to ask or putting an unfair burden on anybody, in my opinion.
And I have one last question about enforcement. You kind of got into that a little bit ago, but hopefully we'll have some kind of notification versus a police officer sitting by the new sign saying, you didn't notice the new sign, did you?
So what I plan to do as a follow-up to this item today, pending your approval, is to notify all the businesses again, to let them know that City Council's approved an amendment of the ordinance, that signage would be, we estimate, to be in place at a certain time, and to let them know that it would be enforced from there on out. What we've typically done in working with the police department in the past, just like we've done with things on East Kellogg and the forty mile an hour, is there would be warnings first, letting people know that it's there so they can get acclimated to. But we will notify everyone, this is going to be in place.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary. Councilmember Tuttle?
One of my questions was out of enforcement, so thank you. And then if the businesses would be notified in advance, but then also, what is the penalty? So if a truck gets pulled over because they didn't see the signs or didn't heed the signs, I mean, how punitive will it be for businesses?
You know what? I was afraid you were going to ask that, and I do not know the answer, but I can certainly get that to you, and I apologize for not having that.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. Just a specific question. Why would we leave out, what is that, West Dallas, Anita, Casado, that part of Twenty-Seventh Street, and West Atlanta, where trucks could still go through the neighborhood, but then find out they can't go down those other streets? Why wouldn't we just deny all of that?
I would say, I think that's a good question. We probably ought to look at that. We, we, we watched to see what trucks did. We talked to some of the neighborhood and tried, and tried to determine what, what made the most sense, but it probably makes sense while we're out there, especially for all the more costs it would be, that maybe we ought to consider doing that. Staff, based on, on what they saw happening and some of the traffic coming off Twenty-Seventh, we never saw any trucks using Dallas or Anita because of what jog they'd have to make again. They're either using Twenty-Seventh and going straight north, or they would wait until they got just that first street just north of the yellow area that you saw. We never saw anybody taking those other two routes through there, but I suppose it could make sense to add those to it.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that it maybe gets, yeah, at least Dallas, because then it would get too confusing for trucks potentially as they try and find alternate routes. So it may not happen today, but as they try and find alternate routes, I would worry that we're pushing them to there. And a fairly simple question. I mean, not only is it a safety hazard, but I'm guessing that most of our residential streets are not built to the same standards as arterial roads, and so truck traffic can deteriorate the residential streets more so than it does the arterial streets.
You are correct, Mayor, and that's something I should have clearly mentioned. That's what we talk to these business owners about, too, and users of that, is that is a significant concern of ours.
Okay. We haven't gone out to the public yet, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. In response to the question about the truck definition, if I may, the Traffic Code of the city defines truck, I believe for this purpose, as specifically any vehicle with a gross vehicle weight rating of over fourteen thousand pounds or a vehicle required to register as a commercial vehicle, if that's any help. And to the fine, it would be a standard fine under the Traffic Code violation. It's consistent with our municipal fine schedule, and I don't have that specific amount, but that's basically, basically the realm we're in. It would be a traffic violation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go out to the public. I don't see any other questions. Anyone in the audience like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. I know, Vice Mayor, you've been working with both businesses and residents, trying to address this concern. Are you ready to move forward?
I am.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and take the recommended action to place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote.
And maybe council member is going to address it, but is, are the other streets going to be added in the motion?
Yeah.
How will that be addressed?
Yeah. St. Paul, Tramitting, Dallas, and any other streets?
Yeah, between now and second reading, I would, I would say let's look at adding those other streets.
Thank you.
All right, cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
Medium Voltage Variable Frequency Drive Maintenance.
The item before you involves a contract with Stanion Wholesale Electrical Company to provide inspection and maintenance of variable frequency drives and Hess Pump Station. Hess is the city's high-service pump station that provides water, treated drinking water into the distribution system for delivery to customers. Variable Frequency Drives, or VFDs, they control the startup and control the speed of the pump motors to meet varying customer demands. VFDs are sensitive, complex electrical equipment that require ongoing maintenance to ensure the best service life, to avoid costly repairs or preliminary replacement of electronic So the contract with Stanion will provide those services for the initial inspections and maintenance of those pieces of equipment. Two firms were proposed. Stanion was selected based upon experience approach and best value. The proposed contract is in the amount of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and funding is available in the Water Production and Pumping Operating Budget for Hess. Therefore, at this time, it's recommended that City Council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Any questions? Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. I would move that we take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. And with no extra variables, it passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
Agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for improvements to Mount Vernon from Broadway to Southeast Boulevard.
Mayor and Councilmembers, Gary Janson, again, the item before you is a proposed agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for improvements to Mount Vernon from Broadway to Southeast Boulevard. This is a project that's been in front of you numerous times over the last few months. We are ready to start construction in the middle of February, and this is one of the last items to wrap up everything that goes with the project. On December seventeenth, City Council approved the overestimate bid and funding for improvements, so now we are ready to move forward. During the plan's middle and review process, the Union Pacific Railroad determined that an agreement was needed to replace existing signals and widen existing surface material. This is fairly standard for on arterial street projects when we're working within their right-of-way. The estimated total cost is just over six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that funding is available within the current budget that was approved by the City Council. With that, I would ask the council to approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Clint Denon, do you claim this district?
I do claim this district, and Mayor, I want to move that we take staff's recommended action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
DER Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Twelve, South Central Neighborhood Plan.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Matt Williams with the planning staff. The item before you today is consideration of adoption of the South Central Neighborhood Plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. The South Central Neighborhood Plan was originally adopted in May of two thousand and six, and after seventeen years of implementing its recommendations, the South Central Neighborhood Association applied for a District Three grant to fund the creation of a new neighborhood plan. That process began back in two thousand and eighteen with the hiring of RDG Planning and Design to help facilitate and craft the new plan with neighborhood and stakeholder input. The Metropolitan Area Planning Commission initiated the plan amendment in October of two thousand and eighteen, and an advisory committee made up of community stakeholders was appointed in December of that year. What you have before you today is a result of that nine-month process that included focus groups, roundtables, an implementation summit, design studio, and showcase. Every neighborhood has its strengths and weaknesses. While forming the plan for South Central, stakeholders in the neighborhood focused on fostering grassroots support for neighborhood change. The neighborhood came to ask themselves, how do we build social capital while creating places for all? Here to share some of the strategies from the South Central Neighborhood Plan is Adam Barlow Thompson. He's a neighborhood resident and a member of the Plan Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Matt. My name is Adam Barlow Thompson, and I am on the Neighborhood Association Board and also am a co-founder of the Neighboring Movement, which does community development through the practice of neighboring in many places, including our neighborhood that we live, the South Central Neighborhood. I'm here to share a little bit about the neighborhood plan. It has five themes, and each plan, each of the themes has action items that are for the city and action items that are for the residents, tangible things that people who live in the neighborhood can do right away. The main goal of the plan is to build momentum and ownership, not from y'all, but from the people who live in the neighborhood. We believe that the neighborhood is defined by some quirky and odd things. We know that South Broadway is how we're known, and that comes with some connotations. But those of us who live there also know that the residents are talented, wonderful people who care about their neighborhood, and we believe this plan will help us revitalize a historic Wichita neighborhood from the inside out. The first theme is building social capital. Social capital is the value that is created through relationships, and we believe that relationships are the key for all of the action items going forward, so that the residents can have ownership over the way that those things take shape. Our nonprofit, the Neighboring Movement, is launching an initiative called the Eight Front Doors in two thousand and twenty, where we will be targeting the eight hundred homes on the north part of the South Central Neighborhood and asking residents to know the neighbors who live in the eight front doors closest to their own. We'll also be studying this project with the help of the Wichita State School of Social Work to see how much social capital is being built and the impact it has on the strength of the neighborhood, including community safety, retention of neighbors who want to live in that neighborhood long-term, and civic engagement. The next theme is maintaining and improving our homes. We have a great housing stock filled with great front porches and homes with lots of character, and we love the diversity that those houses provide in our neighborhood, including big, mature trees. We also know that many of them need repair. We have neighborhood cleanups and reporting to the city that we can do on our part, on the local residents. We're asking the neighbor, the city to look again at code enforcement. I know that other neighborhood plans have also brought up this issue. It's one that I think is an easy thing that the city can start putting some funds toward that would really go a long way with the folks who live in these districts. We also have long-term goals of creating programs that would help create financial incentives for people to do home improvements, especially lower-income folks who would not be able to do it otherwise. We're trying to position our neighborhood for reinvestment, and we're working with our Neighborhood Association to form a business association and finding ways to spotlight local businesses in the area. We also are in an opportunity zone in our neighborhood, and so we know that that draws the eye of some investors, and we ask that you all help protect our neighborhood by looking at this neighborhood plan as a guide for any investment that might happen there and contacting us, the Neighborhood Association, because we are organized and we want to be involved in those conversations. Some of the areas that have been brought up is Harry and Broadway as for commercial, as a place that could easily be used, revitalized with, with not much effort. And then just to the north, you guys have spent a lot of time today talking about the new baseball stadium in that area. This, my house is just south of here. It's walking distance to the new baseball stadium, and there's a lot of vacant lots just south of Kellogg, against the river. BG Properties is right there, and those, any developer who looks at the neighborhood's going to look here first, probably. And when they do, and you hear something about that, please contact us. We want to not displace massive amounts of vulnerable people, and so that's the goal there. Yeah, we would love to see some development, and we want to do it responsibly as well. The next theme is positioning our neighbor, or I'm sorry, enhancing the experience of moving around the neighborhood. And so this includes, our neighborhood is designed with big, one-way, north-south streets. And so the one-ways that are downtown extend all the way through our neighborhood. And so Main Street in our neighborhood is a residential street that is ninety feet across and is one-way. So cars are going down that street at unreasonable pace, and neighbors who live on that street, across the street from each other, never interact because they, they would never go out their front door. So this is imagining what we could do with some of those spaces. These are long-term goals. We know that there's a lot of more financial implication with these, but we see these as, when we look at a ten-year scope, some things that we would love to try. The last one, then, is creating places for all. And our neighborhood, there's, does not have a lot of common space. There's not a lot of park space. There's no community center space, that kind of thing. And so figuring out creative ways to do that. There are detailed projects in here, but just know that these are imagin, we're trying to spur imagination with these ideas, not do the specific one that's listed there. And the, the goal is that we would be creative about some of the things that we do have. We have alleyways. We have some streets that aren't paved. We have what we like to call assets in waiting, places that if we are creative about, we can really do some cool things with. And so we're looking, the plan highlights some of that, that initiative there. In conclusion, I want to thank Councilman Clint Denon. He is the man. He is a man among giants, giants among man. Is that how that goes? And his energy and vision for this has been helpful. When the Hyatt funds came available, there were lots of people with lots of ideas, right? And he said, before we go off buying a bunch of bus stops, let's make a comprehensive plan, and this is what we've come up with, and I'm excited about it. We've used it to create energy and excitement within the neighborhood. We recognize that the ownership of this plan lays on us, and we are motivated and energized to do that in the neighborhood. We're already beginning implementation, and we are here today to invite City Council to be partners with us as we revitalize this historic neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. The public hearing for this item was held at the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission in December, but if the City Council would like to take public comment today, you would need to waive Policy Number Nine. The recommendation, oh, the plan was recommended to you by the South Central Neighborhood Plan Advisory Committee. It was also recommended by the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, the District Advisory Board for District Three, and has received support from the South Central Neighborhood Association. The recommendation to the council is that you adopt the South Central Neighborhood Plan as an amendment to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan and pass the ordinance. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this point? Yeah, Councilmember Clay.
I have a question. This is, I'm very impressed with this plan. I think the neighborhood did a great job, and the planning department did a great job. I have a very technical question, and it's about the, it's on page twenty-two, and then it was referenced in Slide Seven about community development cooperation.
Yes.
And in the plan, it says that what the city can do is activate a CDC. And I was wondering how, can the city actually do that? The slide said encourage. I understand that. Can we actually activate a CDC?
That is what the RDG Planning and Design had written in here, and yeah, when I was writing the slides, I said encourage, because I felt like activate. I'm not sure that the city can actually do that. If that's something we need to change from the actual plan, I'd be happy to do that.
I know it's just a small thing, but it, it implies that we can do something that maybe we can't.
Right, correct.
Thanks. And it's, like I said, the plan is awesome, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Rob, did you want to address that?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Clint Denon, did you want to waive that? Or is there anyone here that wants to speak before we waive that? Councilmember?
Yeah. We have maybe one or two people that would. I think the neighborhood president would like to speak.
Okay, I would move that we waive the... What is it, Policy Number Nine? And allow public comment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Then we will open it up. So if you would like to address the council on this item, we're now going to allow it. Come up, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes.
Hello. Welcome for... Thank you for having us and to adopt our plan. We really appreciate it. My name is Janet Price. I resided 2010 South Water Street in Wichita, resided in the South Central Neighborhood for 34 years. Became involved in the South Central Neighborhood Association in 2013 in order to resume our participation in the yearly neighborhood cleanup program. We have had seven very successful cleanups since that time. In 2016, I became the president of the South Central Neighborhood Association. Over the 34 years I've resided in the South Central Neighborhood, I've watched the neighborhood become more and more blighted from the lack of resources for maintenance of the roads, sidewalks, old trees, and lighting and safety issues. SCNA is very invested in getting a new identity, from our image as South Broadway to a more positive image such as Old Highway 81. The adoption and implementation of the new South Central Plan will help the neighbors and the city of Wichita to make an investment in the goals and visions in the new plan. This new positive action plan will help South Central begin to address the needs and image of the South Central Neighborhood. South Central Neighborhood is looking forward to working with the city to see our goals and visions come to fruition, and would like to thank you in advance for your assistance, ideas, time, and efforts in helping to improve our neighborhood and city. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Anyone else wanting to address the council? Okay, well, we appreciate that. We'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Clint Denon.
Thank you, Mayor. So much I wish I could say. I could sit here for an hour and talk about the SociaLife Group, the Neighborhood Association, the neighbors in the area, and their willingness to go through this long process and work with the city directly to do this. There has been a very intentional plan put together. Thank you for those of you who have seen the hard work that has gone into this. I honestly think that this neighborhood plan can be kind of the gold standard of how every other neighborhood plan can be put together in the city of Wichita. One of the things that I've noticed in our city when we talk about planning items is that when everything goes to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, they talk about whether or not a business or a residential property fits into the current character of the neighborhood. But neighborhoods don't have any way to change the character of their neighborhood if they want to change the character of their neighborhood. Neighborhood plans like this are a way to allow them to start to change the character of their neighborhoods. I think we have a lot of looking at how we do planning in the city of Wichita and how we can allow neighborhoods like this who have a South Broadway, which is... It's so well ingrained in the thought of the city that South Broadway is a certain way. And they have done an amazing job at changing their neighborhood, South Broadway, and want to continue to change South Broadway into an actual asset of the city and not something that drains the city by the way of crime and blight and the other things that drain resources. And this group is amazing. They're doing just that. I could talk and talk and talk about this plan and about this group, and I just want to encourage everyone in the city that cares about their neighborhood to look at neighborhood plans and how they can do that and look at this neighborhood plan. And take this group of citizens... Thank you, Adam, very much for your leadership, and SociaLife Group, and Janet, and the Neighborhood Association for your leadership. I didn't do anything. You guys did most of the work on this, and so I'm so grateful for you guys and the change that you're making in your neighborhoods. That being said, Mayor, I do want to make a motion that we take the staff's recommended action and adopt this plan.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
I do have one appointment that we need to go ahead and make today because of some changes and some activities going on. I need to appoint Becky Tuttle to the NBC Board. If there's no other appointments, I would move that we accept the Becky Tuttle to NBC Board appointment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Any other comments?
Councilmember Tuttle.
I just wanted to make a brief comment. I had a meeting yesterday with the Wichita Public Schools Superintendent, and she reminded me that the great work that our city staff does, and she specifically mentioned during the holidays and when we have inclement weather, and she brought up Public Works and how they keep our roads and sidewalks safe and clean so that our students and faculty and staff can get to school every day. But it really made me think about all of the other departments that worked not only during the Christmas holiday but on Christmas Day or on New Year's Day. I know for sure police, fire, Public Works, airport, I'm sure there's a many that I'm not mentioning, but then also during the holidays, transit and housing and park and rec provided opportunities for people to be able to get around our city and to be able to activate our community. So always want to thank city staff for all of their continuing efforts to make our city better, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we still have a workshop to get to before we go to the reception honoring you. And I would just like to briefly thank you for your years of service to this community, not only as mayor, councilmember, school board member. You will be greatly missed.
That's very kind of you. I appreciate that, and it's been my honor to be a part of this governing body and work with all of you, and I truly appreciate it. So if there's no other comments, I would move that we adjourn today's council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously, and we will move into workshop.
Mayor, we have just a brief presentation to give you a status report on ICT-1, and there was similar information that was shared with the county commission, and we want to make sure that you're on the same page with them. We are moving forward with the program, and Chief Snow is going to talk a little bit about that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. I'm here today to give you just a brief briefing on the implications and the results from the 90-day ICT-1 pilot program. And if you recall, ICT-1 stands for Integrated Care Team. Just real quickly, I'll give you just a refresher. The Integrated Care Team was a great opportunity, a bright opportunity for the city of Wichita and the county to come together and provide these services, the mental health issues that resolve within our community. It consists of a qualified mental health worker, the law enforcement, and in the original 90-day pilot program, law enforcement was composed of both the sheriff and the Wichita Police Department, paramedic, which was composed of Sedgwick County Fire, District Number One, the Wichita Fire Department, and also EMS. So you can see a great collaboration between all the entities. Just kind of to give you an idea of how the program actually worked, the dynamics of it, the paramedic was the primary driver of the vehicle. The quality mental health provider sat in the passenger seat with a computer stand, and then the law enforcement was in the back with access to our computer aid dispatch. The first... They ran on a Tuesday-through-Friday schedule, 10-hour schedule, started at 1:00 in the afternoon and worked till... They were supposed to be 11:00 at night, but oftentimes, you know, you can't just stop patient care, so oftentimes they went past the 11:00 at night. But the first hour to hour and a half of the shift, they utilized that time to do some research, and their goal every day was to address either one to two of the medical critical unit referrals. And then at the evening, when the time got darker, since they only had one law enforcement officer with them, they backed away from some of the medical care unit referrals just due to safety reasons. But one of the things they did do in this short 90-day pilot program was develop a process to actually take ownership of the law enforcement's involuntary transports, which freed up a significant amount of time for law enforcement officers. How did they receive the calls, or how did they address calls, or who did they address? Sometimes they just self-dispatched from the research that they did prior in the day. They received calls from the crisis centers, referrals from both the police department, fire, and EMS, and then just from tracking of some of their patients that they had responded to and prior patients from comm care and some of the other resources, they addressed some high-risk patients. What type of metrics did they gather and report? The disposition of each call, and there are several categories, a significant number of categories that they tracked. The other thing that tracked is how many times did they free up some of the public safety entities, considering law enforcement, considering fire, and also comm care resources? And how many transports did they take to the crisis centers that were... I mean, how many times did they advert crisis center transports? How many times did they advert emergency room patronage? The percentage of patients that they actually treated was something else that was tracked. The number of times they administered medicine, the number of times they performed medical screenings, and then also with that medical screening, they implemented a self-imposed rule of how many times did they actually provide the care in which that patient did not either call EMS or report a medical condition within 48 hours of being treated by the ICT team? So what kind of outcomes did they have after 90 days? Well, first of all, they actually were in session for 53.5 shifts out of 55. They contacted 197 patients. That was for an average of 4.11 patients. Again, they worked Tuesday through Friday from 11:00. They started at 1:00 in the afternoon and went supposedly till 11:00 at night, but oftentimes past that time. If you look up here, we have a bar chart, a bar graph, and the red indicates the times in which they were either referred to a patient and... Or they arrived on the scene and there was no patient there. So the red's the times in which no patient was actually found. The other... The yellow bars represent times in which they actually had to hand that patient off to either law enforcement or to EMS. And if the green, which is the one that's most prevalent up here, is the times in which they actually treated patients. The tallest bar there is the time in which they were actually able to provide care there at the scene and treat in place. The other times, the other greens are... Represent times in which they either were treated by printing off materials or things to that nature. And then the blues are the times in which they actually had to be transported to somewhere else. The next slide that I have for you is just... It's in a pie. Instead of the bar graph, it's in pie-shaped form, but it basically represents the same thing. And if you take a look at it, over half the time out of the 197 patients, over half the time, they were actually able to treat them in place, so significant positive results. Resources that they freed up during this time, 141 times they were able to return law enforcement back to more... To other calls freed up their time. 96 times fire apparatus, 92 times ambulance, so a total of 329 times resource freed up. 114 times comm care crisis center was avoided, and 92 times the emergency room visits were avoided also. If we look at just specifically law enforcement, law enforcement, the estimate was about 70% of law enforcement's time, the ICT-1 was able to free up the officer. So for a total in the short 53.5 shifts, 226 hours of time, and they use the average of 1 hour and 19 minutes is what they averaged for law enforcement. As far as preventative, it's... We don't have any statistics on that at this point. The next chart kind of shows you where ICT-1, the red, is where they actually made contact with patients, and as you can see, just says, "When we first presented this to you," or "When I first presented this to you," the majority of the calls are in the core of the city. I want to preface this slide with the statement that there's absolutely no savings to the involved entity. I don't want there to be any misconception there, but it improves the service that we offer to the community and allows resources to address other types of calls by using ICT-1. What I like to refer to it as, it does provide readiness value to our community. And for example, if you take a look at the law enforcement, you know, the value that the readiness savings that ICT-1 provided to law enforcement was $137.80. And it's been itemized there for each one of those entities. So for value per shift, it was right over $1,000 for each one of those entities. If you look at the actual cost model for the 53.5 days they were in service, there was a loss, and the reason is because we had startup costs. You have to purchase equipment. You have to, you know, get the vehicle equipped to provide the services that it needs to. But the longer the service, and there's a projection there, for the 208 days is basically a 52-week program based on the four 10-hour days, the longer that the program stays in existence, the more readiness value that it adds to the community. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions from the council at this point? Do you need guidance going forward?
What are the next steps going forward? What do you need from us?
Well, currently, what we're doing right now is running another pilot program, and it's going to run through the... About the middle of March, and then we'll provide some additional data, and at that time, then, we'll bring back the data that we have. And at some point in time, then, in the second pilot program, some of the entities, for example, Sedgwick County Fire have backed out of it. The sheriff officer has backed out of it, out of supplying it, and their reasoning behind it is simply that it didn't add any value to them specifically. If you take a look, since there's one ICT team, a majority of the calls are in the core of the city, so Sedgwick County Fire, which surrounds the city of Wichita, they don't get much value out of it. So at some point in time, we'll have to make some kind of decisions as far as, do we want to expand the program, and if so, is there funding for it and so forth?
I'm thinking that at the end of the pilot period, that we'll bring the summary statistics back to maybe an en banc meeting of the commission and council so you can talk about the value of the program to both entities and about a go-forward approach. From our standpoint, the avoided cost, or the...
Resource savings?
Resource savings is, I think, justifies continuing the program. Again, we're hoping that the pilot project will prove that out, the second pilot project.
And the simple fact is, and she said it very well, you're providing better service.
Yes.
The second pilot project's the same hours and shifts?
Yes.
Just different resource, different staffing?
Right. Correct.
All right.
I have a question. I mean, this looks like a really good program. I'm trying to look at this, though. The patients per shift... So we have three people on our team, right? And in a shift, on average, they're servicing four patients, right? Do you ever see that we could get... And I know these are people that need a lot of help, so I understand. It takes a call, takes a long time, and we're freeing up those other resources. But do you ever see that we could serve more people with a staff of three on a shift?
We would have to... It just depends on the person. I mean, every call is different.
Sure, some of them take 10 minutes, some of them take three hours, right?
Correct. Yeah, I think the only way, in my mind right now, from the little bit from the 90 days, would be to actually add more units.
To it, okay. Yeah, it just takes that long, right? It just takes that long.
Because sometimes, I mean, on mental patients, you can spend several hours with them trying to get, you know, trying to resolve their issues. them, trying to get, you know, trying to resolve their issues or help them.
And this is more of a statement than a question, but the one thing you did mention that I was really interested in is about the prevention, and that's the part that's really not tangible, but also really important. So some of these folks that we spent a couple hours with, if they didn't receive the attention that they did, what might they have done in the future? And again, you know, that type of return on investment is really hard to calculate, but innately we know that it's really important for our community to prevent future incidents, you know, personal crimes, property crimes, et cetera. So thank you. I think this is a great, a great data. I loved having the data and the information, and I hope we can see results again from the second pilot.
Councilmember Tuttle, I will, just off the cuff, there is one, one incident which I'm specifically aware of is that we did avert a suicide during this time. So I, I think in the next 90 days, we'll try to provide that information to you as far as preventative.
Yeah, sometimes the qualitative data is important as the quantitative data, so social workers often say that stories are data with soul, so thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, you're exactly right. I, I mean, there's almost impossible to quantify what could have happened, and, but the reality is we are providing better service and getting people to help that you don't know what could have happened, so. I think that concludes the workshop.
It does. Again, I want to thank all of our professionals that have been involved in this. It's, it's been exciting to see the results.
All right.